Being to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And the motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
It's been moved and saying to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those same sign, motion carry. Uh, first up it.
Whoops.
Is board appreciation.
So I'm gonna um come forward here and it's seem kind of funky, but this is something that is actually pretty important to do. Um, so in front of you, you can read along if you would, but for those who are listening. Um, the state of Washington declares January um. School Board Appreciation Month and it's there's a proclamation from Governor Inslee, it reads, whereas. The mission on Washington's public school system is to ensure that all students achieve at the highest. At high levels and possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible members of a democratic society. And enjoy productive and satisfying lives and. Whereas Washington's one thousand four hundred and seventy seven locally elected school boards of directors and nine elected educational service district. E S D boards are the core of the public education governance system in our state. Serve more than one point one million students, have a combined annual budget over fifteen billion and employ approximately one hundred and twenty thousand people. And whereas school boards play a crucial role in promoting student learning and achievement by creating a vision. Establishing policies and budgets and setting clear standards of accountability for all involved. And whereas school board directors are directly accountable to residents in their districts and regions. Serving as a vital link between members of the community and their schools. And whereas school boards and E S Ds provide a passionate voice. Of advocacy for public schools and the welfare of school children. And whereas it is the it is appropriate to recognize school board directors as outstanding public servants. And champions for public education. Now therefore, I J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty four. As School Board Recognition Month in Washington and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. So, um. Next week, you're having other treats, but these are from Deanna and I. They are local Jade's chocolate.
Calorie free.
Thank you. I was just gonna ask that.
And then, um. Here's your certificate. This is important to me that you get these each year. Um, and I know that through my years, I have different certificates. You're welcome. But in times when it gets hard, we have to remember. Because sometimes there's gonna be some hard decision made and so we have to make sure we honor those that are here. Alyssa and Michelle, um. Your treats will be waiting for you either next week when we see you or um you can swing by the office if you're really hungry for that chocolate. But thank you all for your service and we do appreciate you. Thank you.
Alright, moving on. Uh, the information on number two would be Selena Hazard's travel debrief.
Hello everyone. Um, oh, there I am. Hello, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Selena Hazard. For those of you who don't know me. I am the recruiter for the migrant education program here at the Prosser School District. And earlier this school year, I had the opportunity to attend a conference in Florida. So I wanted to share something that I learned while I was there and how I how I have applied it since I've been back. Um, as I mentioned in the short summary that I added to the um to the packet. I had the opportunity to really bond one on one with our state recruiters. And when I got back, I was able to contact her and immediately put in place what I learned while I was there. She came out to our district two days in a row and um we went out to. Our H two A camps and we were able to recruit twenty new um students into our program in just those two days and so. We plan to continue this throughout the school year and yeah, I don't know if you guys have any further questions I can answer for you.
Selena, could you tell our new Bullard members a little about your program and what a migrant recruiter is?
Yeah, so our program is uh it's in our district to basically remove educational barriers for students who. Migrate with their migrate with their parents um to different districts around the United States. Um, Washington is actually the number one recruiting state. Um, and what I do, I am the first person families meet and see when they arrive to our district. I interview them and once I determine if they qualify, then we can start providing services.
What kind of services do you provide? Fill them in about that.
Um, some of the services we can provide could be summer school tutoring. Um, we have taken students to college tours or. Other different events where they can earn half credits. Sometimes that could be eighth graders through high school. Um, we have, we we also, besides the students, I guess I should say this, it kind of starts at home, so we do. Provide services and resources for parents because it starts at home and if the student feels. Like they are being supported by their parents, they will do better in school. Um, so if we've also bought like. Um, gosh, I lost my train of thought, uh caps and gowns for students. We can provide vaccines or pay for it if need be. Um, also physicals and um other things like that. I don't know if I mentioned everything, but that's kind of like the gist of it.
Selena, I have a question. Can you can you explain, I I heard you and it's listed here in the in the packet, but you talked about H two A.
Yeah.
How? Or again, explain to me what you did with with that.
Okay. So when I say H two A, so eight, so the like O S P I or the state, I guess. There's a small grant for H two A workers when they come here. Yes, they cannot attend school. But they can be enrolled into our program and they do provide funds for our school. What we can provide for them is um educational material, backpacks, hygiene. Um, all those things and when we go out, when I said we went out, we have to go to these camps and interview them. Um, it's basically, you know, when they arrive, what type of work they're doing. And I also mentioned on there some of the um. Like interview skills, we learned some of the newer interview skills, you know, we have four minutes to really engage your family or a student. Um, in order for them to really wanna be part of our program. And so the first day, our state recruiter, she kind of led me through that process and then the next day I took the lead. So I kind of took on the leadership role and um we were able to enroll them into the program.
Is there an age limit to the program? Oh, sorry, right?
No, I was right, I'm on, I think I'm right on track with you, so.
Okay.
Yeah, there is, um, they could be in the program up till age twenty-two.
Okay.
Okay. So you you're not necessarily working with children. That are in the H two A camps then. These are adults that are here on a. Work visa for the H two.
Right.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay, no, I I they we were thinking you were, they were bringing kids up with them, which.
Oh.
I don't think that's part of the program.
No, not yet. Maybe maybe in the future.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Can you talk about the dollars that follow, Selena? So is it like a set amount for enrolled?
You know, I don't know the exact amount. I do know, um, maybe Eric can help me on on this.
So there's a multiplier that's divided by a state.
Eric, we can't really hear you very well. Maybe switch your mic, maybe. Um. The northern lights are interfering.
How's that? Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, so there is a multiplier that's provided by the state. Um, it does change yearly and depending on the state legislature and the allocations that they give. Uh, I actually will be attending a meeting this Friday. Where we'll be we'll be talking about the new uh multipliers and the allocations in addition to rollover for our program. So I can provide a more in-depth uh. Presentation or information for your packet a little bit later that shows you what that multiplier is uh for each of those students. Across the board, um, we receive an allocation from ages three all the way through twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, to provide services. So um as I've mentioned before, for with some of you where we've had. Kind of a conversation in my office, there are major service areas that the migrant program is focused on. And in particularly for us here in Prosser. Out of those uh service kind of main areas, we're looking at pre-K. Um, as Deanna has mentioned before, kindergarten readiness is extremely important. So we've put a lot of. Backing into that. Also, um, math and reading or E L A. Are some major places that we focus our our attention on. Did that provide? An answer to your question?
It's a little more information, but I would, if if possible, if we could follow up and find out, you know, how the how the money follows.
I I guess when you say how the money follows, are you talking about an actual allocation per student or?
If if that's how it works, I mean, is that not how it works? I know like, we know right now for state, we get matching funds for each student and just not. I didn't, you know, eight thousand dollars per student. Is that how it would work or is it just, okay, we receive federal? Title money for the migrant program, so the obligation is we go out and talk to the workers.
Um. I guess, um, there is an allocation per student, um, what the the final total of that I can. Like I said, changes and so I can get you that information, but um. Is there a question in regards to why we focus in that area or?
No, not at all. I was just wondering.
Yeah.
About.
Yeah, the money, the money falls with enrollment, so just like anything else within the school district. Um, funding is tied to enrollment, so if your numbers goes up, your enrollment goes up and then your funds go up, so. If there's a decline in your enrollment, the same thing follows. It's it's kind of. Same, the same formulas with every other component within our system of education.
To the school board, Delisa and I can commit to getting you the number of migrant dollars. And what preliminary allocation in the brand's presentation tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, and and the other thing is you guys see all that in the budget as well. It comes through in the budget.
Hey, um, Selena, how many migrant students in our in our in our system, not the H two eight? Well, how many do we have this year?
Right now, God, at the top of my head, I didn't look at it today, but like six hundred, I think last time I looked, six hundred and thirty-seven. Don't quote me on that, but give or take. Thanks. I did complete some today, so there was like sixty students.
Close enough, that's close enough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions we can answer for you?
Okay, good. I don't hear anymore, I'm good. Uh, Selena, thank you for giving us a brief on that and uh, thank you Eric for jumping in.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on is Riley Maddox, a travel debrief for the National Association. Of Agricultural Educators.
Alright, hopefully you guys can hear me.
Yep, we can.
Um, okay, so, hi, everyone. Uh, I think I've. Gotten to meet most of you, but I'm Riley Maddox. I um teach agriculture at the high school. Um, at the end of November, I was able to attend the National Association of Agricultural Educators Conference in Phoenix. Um, and that actually goes along with the National C T E Career and Tech Ed Conference as well. And um so in June, I applied at our state level for a scholarship to go for teachers between their second and fifth year in education. And then I um. Got selected at the state level and then my application got passed on to nationals and then. I was chosen along with about thirty other people from across the nation to go to the. Teachers Turn the Key Program at the National Conference, so um. Two of the five days while I was there, we were just in that cohort cohort of about thirty people. From across the whole nation. There were some really cool people from um a girl in my group from Hawaii, talking about what they were doing there. New York, you name it. Um, so two of those days was spent with just them talking about, you know. The struggles of the first five years of teaching and how we can maintain our programs and maintain our sanity. And then the next couple of days of the program. Um, I was out with all of the other teachers at the conference, so attending. Like the Western Regional Meetings and a bunch of workshops, some really cool ones um that I brought back to my classes, um like. Workshops on teaching about co-ops and um one from the writer who wrote my curriculum for my agricultural business class. Um, and a veterinary science, you name it, there was pretty much anything to pick from, so. I got to learn some really cool stuff, got to um talk a lot to my state staff of our Washington Association. And connect with them along with um some of our national staff, cuz the. The new National Association of Ag Ed president is actually from our area, well, our region, Montana. So it was really cool and I got to learn a lot and. Yeah, do you guys have any questions?
Didn't you win an award?
Yeah.
Yeah. Didn't you win an award?
I did. So the award was the scholarship and the um the trip for free to go to nationals. So I didn't have to pay for anything, it was all paid for.
That's a great award.
So what is like one of the big aha's? Pro or con that you, when you sit there and think about what we're doing in Prosser and what you heard about? What is like one thing you like, we got this, right? We're, we got it going on and one thing you're like. We need, uh, we really need to do that.
Um, I guess one thing I'm proud of with our program is just the. The offerings we give to our students, so um like I have Steve Hader, my coworker, is doing really great things in our shop and offering those things to kids. He's doing great things with F F A. Um, we offer a ton of different career and leadership development events, um speaking. Different skills contests, so we're doing a lot on that end. We have like ten plus things kids can compete in in the spring. Um, and then just doing a bunch of different community stuff, plant sale. Grizes Farm, Petting Zoo, all that stuff. So I was pretty proud when I was talking to other educators, you know, it's hard to. Compare what you're doing when you aren't sure what everyone else is doing, so getting to talk to them and be like, okay, we actually were do. Giving a lot of offerings to our kids in different programs. Um, and then I did get to hear about. Uh, some just different like grants people are doing and then some of the ways that they're. Making it work and then um, you know, just talking to people about how. This generation learns and what their struggles are in their classroom, being able to kind of resonate with other people and be like, okay. This is, this is what we're all seeing across the nation, so it was good.
Great, any other questions for Riley?
Well, um, I I think, you know, what what you guys got going on is uh obviously been pretty good, so. Pretty excited for you guys, it's awesome.
Thank you. Um, yeah, and I guess while I'm here, thank you guys for supporting our C T E programs, ag programs. Um, if you guys ever want to. See some cool stuff that kids are doing in March, the first or second week, I could. Get a date if anybody's interested, but we host our District Four F F A Leadership Development Contest um with. Strictly like public speaking competitions and if anybody's interested in watching some of those or judging them, I can get you a date in March. If anybody wants to come see some cool stuff kids are doing.
I would love to see that.
Me too, Riley.
Okay, so I will get you guys a date when I have a calendar in front of me, more accessible. And yeah, we'd love for you guys, even if you're interested to maybe judge something, so. Yeah.
That sounds good. Thank you, Riley, and uh, you know, congratulations on getting that award in the scholarship, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, next up is state and federal grants presentation.
Okay, um, Ashley's gonna pull up the PowerPoint. Um, and I, feel free to ask questions. There's a lot of layers and complications to state and federal programs. Um, but this is one of the ways we bring quite a bit of money into the district. Uh, to support our students for various uh in various programs for various reasons. Go ahead and go forward. Actually, the first part is on federal programs, uh, well, maybe not. So that's really hard to see, so I apologize, but we have several grants in the. In the district, Title One has several parts. Um, there's, you know, part, part of it is for all students, part of it is for migrant students. We have Title Two funds, those um are are great for supporting our teachers, Title Three, and then there's various other programs. And we'll talk a little more in detail on those. We also have a handful of just miscellaneous state grants and those of all, you know, come and go sometimes depending on. And depending on the um. Whatever's offered. So right now, we have a ninth grade success grant, we have O S S I school improvement for heights and middle school. T P E P is the teacher and principal evaluation. We can actually basically submit for funding for when we have to train our new teachers or train any new evaluators. Um, at the athletic fees, when the law changed and and students who run free and reduced lunch no longer paid for an A S B, we now can apply for funds to help. Bridge that gap of that funding loss for our A S B. Um, we do parent educator certification that's required now. And then um and and so they have to have twenty-eight hours each year of training. And so that um helps cover that cost. And then we normally apply and receive some migrant summer school funds. That hasn't come around yet this year, but we've had that every year for for many years.
So I'll and um, I'll give you an example. Today at four o'clock, I testified in the house today. On the on the house floor remotely, huh, um, but it is something that we as district leaders. Are really advocating for. Today, I testified on behalf of the ninth grade success. Um, and those funds that we get for them, um, they were not in the governor's budget this, for this next um biennium and so. It was like, you know, we needed to figure out a way to keep that. And so I was asked to testify as the only superintendent in the state. To talk about it because of the role that I've been in three different districts and how that's been implemented in different places. So I did that four o'clock today. So, um, whether it's Eric or Deanna or myself. Managing this state and federal programs is really crucial to our success and making sure that we advocate. And um are timely.
Um, it's also really important that like our enrollment's correct and, you know, like migrant numbers and our free and reduced lunch numbers. Because those are all formulas that are used to give us funding. Um, we did take a little hit on Title One this year because of the. Low income population in the city of Prosser based on the census. Um, but hopefully that will.
Write itself, even though we don't do census for a while, they're working on.
Cause it was done during. Kind of survey thing they do, although I've never seen it in my life, but that's what the O S P I told me.
In addition, um, the reason why Selena's role is so important. Is because our families are migratory and they might be in our area for only a short amount of time. Uh, given the current state of the uh properties within. Prosser city limits and the surrounding areas, housing is very difficult for families, so. Uh, they do migrate quite a bit, um, just because they are being priced out, can't afford to live here. So, um, it's imperative that our recruiters constantly visiting with people and going out into the community. Um, and you, it helps with all of these dollars staying here in Prosser, so we can better serve our community and our clients.
Um, yeah, and it's, uh, uh, the students that are in the migrant program are all all qualified for free and reduced lunch. So that also assists with those numbers, which those numbers are the numbers they use for a lot of funding formulas for us, so. Go ahead and go to the next one, Ashley.
That's a good question.
Yep.
Um, can you just get, give like a high level view of what the ninth grade success is?
So ninth, the ninth grade success grant is about, so. If a student is on track by the end of their ninth grade year, they have a much higher probability of graduating from high school. And ninth grade's that pivotal year that transition to high school, they have, they kind of have to be more independent, more responsibility. Um, and so it's doing a lot of things, everything from supporting kids academically. To providing mental health support, to providing, you know, maybe tutoring. Um, our G A R T program is doing that for our freshmen right now. Um, taking a student, so we we actually have a a dashboard where we can see. Every student, um, how they're doing academically, behaviorally, um, attendance. And it actually, there's a, they, it actually gives you like your red list of students and your yellow list of students, the kids that are at very high risk. And um in that committee, so I, the the high school runs a grant, really David Funk runs that grant. Um, but I attend, I try to attend all of their meetings, I had to kind of, we kind of helped them start it. Last year, Brian was was out at that time. And they've changed this year to where they have all of their freshman um Mustang period teachers coming. And so the last week, we had a meeting and we were working on um this, there's a survey that they took. Uh, that was really about how they feel about school, what they've found, have they connected with one teacher or more teachers? Do they um feel safe? There was, so we did some work on that and you can actually drill down. Um, and see which students said they were, they weren't feeling safe, and so the counselors and David have been able to intervene in that case.
We try and find, is there a correlation between the grades and each of, not each, but a group of those questions, so like. Where where is the disconnect?
Mm-hmm.
You know?
And they also um like will basically kind of case manage, so for instance, um, they they'll. Well, probably this will be next week, but we'll put up the list of students and um say there's forty students that have an F. Um, the teachers in the room could say, I have him and her and her, I'll take those those three, and then they kind of bird dog them. So they have the freshman teachers because they they all have, the all the freshman kids are in one of their classes. Um, I'll give an example, last year, um, my husband was on the committee last year, he still is this year, cuz he has freshmen this year. And he had like five kids and he was like. Bugging them in the hallway and and these are kids he had in class, so they picked kids that they know. And he's talking to him in class, he's actually going to teachers and saying, hey, can you tell me what's going on with with this guy? He had a boy who had, who was, who was not passing one of his core classes. And he talked to, he talked to him, he's a second language student, he was like afraid to talk to the teacher. He kept trying to encourage him, he's talking to the teacher, he's talking to the kid, he's trying to get them to come together without him making that happen. The kid continues to have a failing grade. Finally, he got this kid to talk to this teacher. And by the end of the semester, trimester, he had an A. He just was afraid and he just didn't feel like, he didn't feel like he could approach him and the teacher was kind of expecting him to him to come and talk to him to get help and. And by the end of the year, he had an A. And so if some of it is just advocacy and, you know, like, it's okay, you can talk to a teacher. You would be amazed how many kids you can say, have you talked to a teacher?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're intimidated and they're dealing with probably, they have a lot of men at the middle school, but a lot of men, you know, which sometimes maybe might feel. And it's not just men that might feel intimidate, you know, intimidating, but um, they just, it's, it does and they're, so it's building in the confidence. And teaching, trying to get those kids to advocate for themselves. Um, there are some very specific strategies that you go through. They have kind of this menu that you work through um to choose some some different things that you're gonna implement to help make the kids successful. So they they had a, uh, they improved the failure rate last year. And again, it's a different group of kids, so those kids are now sophomores, but the failure rate coming out COVID has been a huge challenge. But they reduced the freshman failure rate last year by seventeen percent with with the work they did with this grant.
And this grant then allows us to help pay for some of their extra time and some of their work and some of the supplies that they need them or whatever.
And and last year, there was literally probably. Six or seven peoples, all that worked on it last year. This year, the group's much bigger cuz they've been folded in all of the freshmen.
Well, they start to see it working.
They do.
They know that their time put out, their output is, you know.
We also looked at, look at con, specific contents, like how come so many kids are failing content A or content B? And actually something I noticed, so uh on the committee, um, we put up like. The list of classes and the number of failures. And then the there were some teachers or some contents that hire failures, so we brought them in on the committee last year and turned that around. Um, because they, there were certain teachers that wouldn't allow them to turn and lay homework, like there was a lot of things that we did, there was. There was one particular teacher on the committee and and in some cases, we have um contents where there's only one person or two, so if you put that list up there. It's you, it's your class, and from the first meeting to like the third meeting went like eighty-five percent. And from the first meeting to like the third meeting went like eighty-five percent reduction in failures of those kids, of the fresh.
And they did pass that down out today at the PLC meeting.
Good.
So they had big notebooks.
So they're really, and they're.
No.
No, no, it's not that at all. It's kind of bird dogging them and supporting them and being an advocate for them.
Yeah, and I think that's the part is the teacher really gets a voice then. And, and we don't want it dum-dum, but we also, at all.
Yeah.
But what we don't want is, you know, you're a freshman and you weigh eighty-seven pounds. And your teachers, this teacher's been here forever and he goes, where's your assignment, right? And they're like. Right? I mean, so a lot of it has to do, or they think, a freshman honestly believe, you know, let's say there's ten math problems they're supposed to turn in. They don't have them all done. They don't turn in the nine they've got.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if it's not all done, they don't turn it in. It's sitting in the bottom of the backpack. So a lot of it is what you hear in avid. Organization turning in assignments, learning that turning in a six out of ten is better than a zero out of ten and what that does to your grade. There's just all kinds of things.
Yeah.
And you know, they, they, it's helping support them. They have to build their confidence, but it's also showing them. There are people here that care about them and want them to be successful.
I mean, I think we, I mean, we, we've talked about, you know, building relationships and that's great to hear.
And that's where some of those, the, the surveys about how they feel are really important. And we were able to like, you know, to see the teachers in the room were able to see some of those kids that were saying, I don't feel connected to teacher. And, and there's a few of them, the teachers are like, what? I, like, I think that kid, that kid's in my class, they're doing great. And so they, I mean, there's a lot of people really taking it to heart and, and um changing their practice because of it, so.
Yeah. Have one other question on this slide.
Okay, sorry, that was a long answer.
I know, but uh, and I don't think, I don't know if you have the numbers now, but I'd be interested to see what the. That grant for the ASB, how much that is covering, you know, what, what we're not getting, I doubt it's a hundred.
Um, I actually can probably just look it up when, I can look up probably last year's. I don't know if we've submitted this year's. When you're doing the GEEPS update, I'll see if I can just find it for you and tell you what it is. It's, it's not tens of thousands of dollars. I know it's not that.
It's not even, I bet.
If it just, if it evens out or.
No, no, not even close, no.
I'm not even close. I'm gonna say forty, forty percent maybe of what we've lost.
Yeah. Forty-ish.
Ish, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I won't look it up because we gave you an estimate, but.
But and the least can, we can put.
And we'd have to know how much we took in an ASB for you to even know what that percentage was over the last several years. But, but I would say, yeah, forty percent's probably about right. So supplanting is a, a big thing. We cannot supplant our basic ed dollars with state and federal program dollars. So for instance, like, oh gosh, we don't have enough money for all the second grade teachers, so we'll just use some Title One for that. No, we, we can't do that. That's illegal. Um, so we, if they, if we had an audit down the road and they saw we did that, they could make us pay all that money back. So we have to be careful that we're doing things that are not supplanting what we're doing with basic ed. We of course have a lot of guidelines to meet um all the time. And then there's some time and effort that's required with some programs, which is like the teachers and the para educators. Uh, maybe program directors tracking what they did with whom, not down to the in, eh eh every individual person, but in chunks of time. Like for this half of the day, I'm doing math intervention for three hours a day and I'm doing some big pieces like that. Eric actually tracks that.
So at that point, you can take the cost of that person and push it out into two separate categories, basic ed and grant funding.
So we have people that are funded in multiple different ways. So we might have, um, so in, just specifically, I'll, and I'll, you'll see when I talk about some of the grants. We have people that are partially funded by a grant and then funded by basic ed. We have people that might be funded by a couple different grants. Sometimes even maybe three. Um, uh, but it just, you know, it's, it's a, sometimes a bit of a, like, you know, putting together the puzzle. To, you know, cover costs and what's appropriate. So I can't like take migrant dollars and pay for math intervention unless it's only for migrant students. So that, um, we'll talk a little bit about those in the green, red and yellow dollars here in just a little bit. Go ahead. So Title One is a big one. Um, since I've been here, uh, there's been times it's been over a million dollars. Our, this last year was in that eight hundred thousand dollar range. That was about a hundred fifty thousand dollar loss because of that census piece. Um, when they told me it's because our freedom reduce, our um low income number was so low, I'm like, wait a minute. And she says, not at your school. It's, there was, they do a. A, a handful of people do a response to a yearly census survey. I've never seen it in my life. Um, and our percentage has to be above fifteen percent for the formula that we are being funded at, and it went down to eleven. So if it stays down this year, then we're gonna probably lose another hundred fifty thousand dollars out of this next year. So we have to be prepared for that.
So who issues the survey or the census or whatever?
The census and then the numbers come into the federal government and that's how they do the formula, based on what you get. So based on our community, low income percentage, that's part of the formula and the formula has a whole bunch of parts to it, but. Um, so we do pay indirects. All you'll see in all these grants, we're paying indirects, which is um a percentage that's set normally by the state. Of the amount, the funding that we can take off of that for the administrative costs. Helps pay for me, helps pay for, Delise helps pay for my staff, those kinds of things.
And it, it's supposed to technically be for the lighting.
It is, it's to.
It's.
It's to make things function. Uh, funding is with, again, free introduced lunch. Um, for us specifically, other than these other pieces that come from the federal government. We um, we were just, believe it or not, so when I started teaching here in nineteen ninety-one. How, um, about three, so I think my fourth year, I could apply to have some of my student loan paid back because I was, because I was a teacher. And it was the first year Houser Middle School had a high enough free and reduced lunch rate to qualify for me to even get any percentage payback. And I think it was forty percent then. So that's in night, probably ninety-five. Um, in two thousand fourteen, our free and redu, reduced lunch rate was sixty, about sixty-eight percent. This past year, we were at eighty-two, almost eighty-three percent. Um, that means for this current year, to qualify for free or reduced lunch, you have, a family of four makes thirty-six thousand dollars a year. And we have families that survive on a lot less than that. Um, so it does help pay for extra help for teacher, for students and teachers. We have reading intervention, math intervention, language support and instructional coaches that we fund out of Title One. Um, as well as in the past, we've used it, um, well, used it for intervention materials. We've used for summer school activities in the past. We, we won't have the money this year to do that with the cut. Um, we just won't have the money. Um, maybe we'll probably have migrant summer school money.
Summer school.
Yeah, I, migrant maybe, but it's gonna be really, really tight this year. Um, staffing, our staffing, we have eleven certified staff and eleven classified staff. They're either fully paid for with Title One or partially paid for with Title One. Go ahead. Um, Eric, you wanna talk about migrant Title One C?
Sure, um, I do want to. Uh, I, I have that information for the board as well that, that uh was requested. Um, so I can share my screen after I'm done kind of talking about this slide. So.
You'll probably have to wait till the end when we finish it, because Ashley's sharing the PowerPoint.
Sure, no problem. Uh, Title One Part C is uh part of the over one title package. And so that's a grant that I'm in, in charge of and making sure that we uh provide services for students. Again, it's supplemental. It cannot supplant what is offered to all students. I do have a recruiter, a records clerk, and we have two graduation specialists. I had mentioned earlier that we're focusing on the preschool aspect of getting kids ready for kindergarten. And currently, right now, we are also focused heavily on graduating students. We're trying to get to a hundred percent graduation rate for our migrant students. So we provide academic support. We're hopefully going to start next week our tutoring sessions there at PHS for our high school students. Uh, the reason we are moving forward with tutoring in that area is because that's what the students ask for. Uh, they weren't necessarily looking for enrichment. They were looking more for, I need help to pass my classes. I need some extra time with teachers, so on and so forth. So uh, the PAC officers, which I. You probably heard of, and those of you that have been to PAC meetings have, have seen, they have decided to go ahead and. Support that area and, and want us to focus on that for students. We also provide family supports and things, uh, Selena mentioned some of them earlier, everything from vaccines. To doctor's appointments and, and uh bringing in dentists, eyeglasses, all kinds of things like that. One of the things that needs to be clearly articulated though, is that we have to exhaust. All of our other resources for these students prior to us accessing the migrant funds. So uh, because a student is a migrant program student, does not necessarily mean. That we can just automatically skip um and jump directly to that pot of money. We still, they are Prosser School District students, so they're entitled to every single other resource available to them first. Before we get to these funds. And so currently, right now, in our staffing, full or partial, we have two certified and five classified. And this uh program has really helped our community. And really provided a lot of support for our members. Guys have also helped us with bringing in collaborations with community entities like Mr. Aramble. Who is currently working with students and leadership and our families as well, and helping them with leadership so they can engage with our school system a bit more. And uh, it's also helped with things like communication. And all of those different programs so that we can find success for our students. So if you have any questions at any time, I mean, this is a brief kind of flyby overview. The door is always open. Please come on in. Don't, you know, hesitate to ask me questions or stop by the office. We have a lot of information that we're always willing to share.
And I forgot to use my little stoplight system, so migrant funds are definitely red. So if you think about, we, they really have really a lot of restrictions on them. Um, if you go back one slide for me, Ashley, Title One is yellow. We can use that ver, pretty generally with students. But again, not to like replace classroom teachers or things like that, but we can support all students with Title One funds. Go ahead and go the next one. Title Two um is about a teacher and principal professional development, and we also use it for para educators. We cannot professionally develop Kim or myself with these funds, but we can professionally develop the, our teachers. We do use it for um, to pay for a lot of professional development. We use it some, some extra time, like para educators. There might be some training that teachers or para educators need. We um help support our staff that are still taking certification tests. We might buy some study materials for them. Those are pretty inexpensive, but it's something we can check out and they can use to help them, um, because there's a lot of, they have to take a lot of tests. Um, we have to do a lot of data entry and documentation reporting about what we do. And then um, we really only spend a little bit of money on two people. One is a part of a, a coach, because we can use it, because coaches, instructional coaches are professional developers for teachers. And then um, we use a little money for Marcy in my office, because she helps manage all of the para educator training. And it is a monster, um, because we have, you know, si- sixty-five people. And I, we call it the merry-go-round. We have new pairs coming in, we have pairs going out. We have pairs sometimes get off the merry-go-round, then they decide they liked us, so they come back and get on the merry-go-round. And keeping track of all those, those classes and the hours is a little bit crazy, but Marcy does a great job of that. So that really is yellow, but only for adults. Go ahead. Do you have a question? Title Three um is our bilingual. Eric, you wanna talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so uh, one of the things, so currently, right now, Title Three is for professional development. Uh, for English language development. Uh, I really wanna articulate, this is not to uh. Teach Spanish or uh, there's some misconceptions on this. This pot of money is strictly for helping students close academic language, English language gaps. And so um, it's for a lot of different purposes, but this can't be used for it. Again, like migrant funds, it has a lot of restrictions on it and other pots of money have to be expelled first before we. Uh, use this pot of money. However, what we do use this a lot for is professional development. Currently, we have two teachers who um are finishing a certification for English language learner. Um, attachment to their endorsement, to their certificate, so then we can better serve our students within the Prosser School District.
Um, so those are the fed, where we get federal funding from. This is state funding. LAP is, is our biggest one, the assistance program. We got uh about one point two million this year. Um, this really is a lot. Uh, it, no, this, usually when target, when title goes down, LAP goes up. So it's pretty close to what we had last year. I wanna say we were maybe a hundred thousand less last year. But um, we really use this to, for LAP, is reading intervention, math intervention. We also can support behaviors, so our new social worker, we're using some funding to help support our so, to pay for our social worker. And then um, also professional development or around strategies that support struggling students. We do pay for a lot of staff out of this, eleven certified and twelve classified. They're either full or partial. We really can use the funds on any student who is struggling, so I consider this a yellow. Um, but it is, it, it, it is, um, I would say Title One's about, uh, is about halfway between yellow and green. Because it's much more open, whereas this really has, is struggling students. We have a lot of data reporting we have to do at the end of the year to say. These are students that qualified and this is how we supported them. So those teachers at the elementaries, you see like Marcy Kaufman or Cheryl Wiley. And then like Tanner Bolt at the middle school, those are, those, a lot of those people are funded with that. Hi, Cap. Um, highly capable is our gifted funding. We don't get even close to the amount of money that it costs to pay for. Really, we have two people, um, Christine Means and Dean Smith. But they have more time in their day that they're doing um highly capable work than we actually get paid. And this is actually like two or three times as much as we used to get, but it's only like seventy thousand dollars. Um, so we do use that pretty much to pay for some staffing. Um, students have to be identified as gifted. We call it open door, but really, um, Christine now with our new uh gifted teacher. She is supporting students K five and she is really supporting them in extending what in the area that qualifies. So if they are really gifted readers, that's what she's working with them on. If they're really gifted in math, that is what she is working with them. And she um kind of has an intervention schedule versus just come for half day to, to open door. It's been really successful. The kids are, uh, she's doing a great job. She has so much enthusiasm. Um, we do serve kids all the way through twelfth grade, but when they get to high school, it's taking advanced track, college placement, um, running start. AP, those kinds of courses if to continue to be a, a gifted student. They're still gifted, but they may not technically be in the program if they choose not to take those classes. Sometimes we see that, like when they're seniors, they kind of go, oh, we've worked really hard. For, I've worked hard for twelve years, this thirteenth year, I'm gonna maybe take it a little bit easy anyway. Um, but we are required to serve them area gifts, so there are students also qualify in a, in a non, um, and like a spatial way. Which is really like their artistic side, so she's working to support those students as well. Some kids qualify in all three. Some like qualifying two, some kids might only qualify in one area. We've re-implemented our advanced math track in the middle school, so that's one of the ways we serve the kids. She's differentiating while they're in elementary school and when they come to middle school, they can go into the compressed like six, seven, and then move on and go into algebra and eighth grader. And then come on into the high school, taking math classes. Um, they have to qualify. Uh, we do have a test called the COGAT. We're working on maybe making some changes. It, it's a, a test that um, we use, like we screen kids using things like iReady. Um, their arc scores and things, but um, we do a screener in it. We're doing it in a first grade, but we're kind of finding that maybe that's. Little too young, because there's a computerized test, and so we're thinking about moving that up to second grade. And then uh, maybe doing a different kind of screener as they get a little older, because some kids. I had, um, I had a couple of kids in, that were gifted, uh, well, at least the test said they were. Um, but like, one of them was like third grade, yep, she took whatever test we were giving back then and she went. Whereas my other daughter, it wasn't really till, she didn't qualify to the end of fifth grade. Some kids just aren't ready, if they're gonna be ready, so. And then we do two, really two part of people, very small part of people to pay. And it's, it's, it's yellow. We do also have kids um, uh, that do basically what we consider extension. They might be really close to qualifying, but they didn't. I've had kids beg me, and when I was the principal in the middle school. To be in open door and I just would walk them over to Mr. Smith and I'd let them plead their case. And he'd say, if you wanna be in my class that bad and you wanna work hard, come on, and he'd take them. And so um, also at the middle school, and I, they used, I actually would have to ask Michael, but they would do some kids a extension opportunity. They're, you know, when you look in the program, it's not gonna say that they're in the gifted program, but they're, they're working in that same capacity, so. Same thing for advanced math kids. Kids can be in that track without being gifted, so. Okay?
So is there, um. Like, at, at the high school, is there, is there still funding going towards?
There's no funding. There's no funding going towards it because um they're going into whatever track. So like they might go into Kim Hoy's math classes or. And there's no gifted teacher because they're taking their their credit classes. But they can be, you know, like they can take college in the high school. They can take an honors course, AP, running start. Those are all areas or be on an advanced track. And they still qualify.
Yeah, so because once you get here, you're just kind of.
You're on a track of classes. Yeah, yeah, yes.
The whole like open door thing.
The actual like separate class. Yes, yes. And it really right now, the way Christine's doing it, the kids do come to her. And an intervention model, but she's not like. Before we were kind of having, it was kind of more of a language arts model. Um although they used to do like Day of the Notables and stuff, we haven't done that for a while, but there was things like that where Christine's really targeting and working with the kids on what they're gifted in.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah. Bilingual, did you have something, Kim?
I was just saying, it's not a one size fits all program. Christine's.
Oh, not at all.
So it's it's really targeted to expanding that gifted area and letting them explore and and really. Letting them run with what they need. And it is, we I believe she has a couple that are like. I think there's a third grader who's reading like high school like.
Yeah, just because a third grader can read at the high school level, doesn't mean that they should be reading what they would read at the high school.
So so it's. She's taking them and really taking that skill set and making something happen with it, rather than just saying, you know, they can read the twelfth grade textbook.
And she's working with the kids at Witstran and for the first time we have a teacher working with the kids at at K R V. We don't have as many qualify and she's like pushing in to support them or supporting the teacher with differentiation. Because we've never really had, even though kids could qualify in K two, we've never supported K two with a teacher, so. She's doing a great job. Bilingual, Eric?
So this uh pot of money is from the state. Um it fluctuates. It's specifically. For English language development of students who qualify. Uh it's not again. Uh there's there's a misconception that it's only for Spanish speakers. It's not. We have a large Spanish speaking population. However, if we had. Uh anybody who spoke Croatian or Russian and they came into our school district, these funds would be available to. Anyone that speaks another language other than English. It's tied to. Uh our enrollment package, specifically our lang- home language survey. And it helps us determine how we move forward. I have presented to uh to the board the. Bilingual master plan and it's on our website. And if you uh can always refer to it for additional information. We use a WIDA test as a marker. It used to be called ALPA twenty-one. It's changed and this is kind of the direction the state has been going. And we're using all this data to help us better. Understand how to serve students and how we can help develop develop their language. There's four areas of focus. Which are listening, speaking, reading and writing. And so we do have. Five certificated teachers under this program as well as some classified staff that help support. Students in the classroom and throughout the school day. Uh it helps largely with our ELD, English Language Development coursework. Which currently we use the EL achieve program.
Thanks, Eric. And then this next slide, I've kind of already talked about these a little bit. I forgot, kind of forgot I had this line at the end. I did, I sent this PowerPoint to Selena like a month ago and then it kind of got bumped on the board packet, but. Um we uh continue, we apply for grants that we think would work for us as we go. Um we have other grants too that we that really are part of this things that like Darlene will apply for. Um to get for food service.
We have an oven that's down, so we found a grant to apply to replace that oven. Yeah, very expensive, like seventy thousand dollars expensive.
Yeah.
But um and like the grant we applied for for the ADA ramp to offset some of the costs. So there's lots of other things that. I think I would call them less academic related.
Part of the support.
They're part of the support of our 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 total budget.
Yeah, to yeah, seventy thousand. That is should like make the food and cook it and serve it, you would think, but it's no, it's that stand-up oven in Riverview that like rotates the food and yeah.
Isn't that brand new?
No, it's been there for quite a while. They saved it through construction. Um and then.
And now the it's kind of like the. Old pickup you might have at home and has a carburetor and whatever you can't even really find the parts for, so that's where we're at with this.
Yeah.
It's on its way out and there really is not parts to fix it. It's not. That we're not trying to fix it. It's just there really is.
So I talked about these grants already. Um I don't, I don't, there's probably not a whole lot more that I would say about those. Um but we are like, we get alerts, like basically bulletins when different grants come along and then. How about this one? What about that one? We kind of go back and forth.
Every day at the end of we get what's come up. Dates, your warning ten days out, you know, like things like that.
If you want to do this grant, get to it or it's.
Yeah, and so there's so many that. Either you we really don't qualify for.
Right.
Or the checks and balances, the data collection and whatever is. You spend more money collecting that data than what you get for the grant. Sometimes there's a five thousand dollar one and it's going to cost you ten thousand dollars in labor to get the five thousand dollar grant, so.
I think one of the grants that maybe you did recently was the um. Wasn't to look at the mod- not modified schedule, but.
So I started it and then they said, then I had done all the work. I hadn't submitted it yet and then they said, sorry. We're not, there's no money. We took all the money away from this. So uh so that happens.
So Richland is moving forward. They did a big survey. Uh if you saw it in the Tri-City Herald or any of the news, but Richland's seriously looking at. Expanding their calendar.
Yeah.
And it'll it'll look, there are a couple of proposals, but it would look like a trimester, two weeks off. A trimester, two weeks off, a trimester and then a. Seven weeks.
Yeah, six, six, seven weeks.
Right, instead of a ten week summer to help the backslide that happens when in the recovery time that happens in September.
Yeah.
So.
That's but they're talking about it for next year and it's it's January. That's makes a little bit challenging. Um other than the it it questions, the last slide I think says questions. I think we kind of hopefully answered them as we've gone. And this is really, like I said, kind of that ten thousand foot view. Um. We're always looking for opportunities where we can like like. Like the freshman success grant's a competitive grant, but like the paraeducator, like we have to do it and they'll give us money. So it's kind of compliance, like. You have to do it. If you turn this in, we'll give you money to pay for the time for the Paris to get their fourteen hours. So um. It just depends. We but we're always looking for other opportunities. If it's something that supports what we want to do and it's the right thing.
Want to do or already doing. Sometimes. I'm happy to say that there's some work that we're doing in Prosser that we're kind of ahead of the game.
Yeah.
And so we're doing some of the work and then all of a sudden they go, oh, we ought to support schools to do that. Well, we're already doing it. And of course, that's an easy one to apply for because we're already doing the work. Rather than having to kind of reinvent or change the spoke in the wheel. To get the money, we're already doing some of the work.
Yeah.
So I have a question just as an overall on the on the grant system is. You know, a lot of municipalities use grant writers.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Do you know of any school districts that have used a grant writer or contract?
Probably big ones.
Big ones, that's all. They're probably, I would say in the fifteen thousand student range and larger. They have someone who all they do is manage their grants. But they're not like when we think of hearing like the grant writer for. Like BLM or I don't know, you know, people that do these big or the the um. Gear Up Grant is uses a grant writer that goes to the federal government and they do things like that. Um I think. I've heard of sometimes there's something that a school is really focused on changing, like doing a one eighty flip, right? And it's a real competitive grant and they'll reach out to somebody, but it's much like a realtor. So let's just pretend that it's a three million dollar grant. Well, their fee is ten percent.
Yeah.
If they're awarded.
Like I I mean, there I haven't, there hasn't really been, most of the grants that come across, they're not huge.
And they're compliant.
And um the ones that are competitive are pretty small. It, you know, back in the day when there's like the Gates Grant and stuff where it was millions and millions, then maybe you consider by hiring a grant writer. That it would be worth it if you had someone that had the experience. Um like the hospital, different groups use PETA. They use a grant writer, but they use it like they just pay a little small contract. To do this grant or that grant. When you talk about grant writer, me, Eric, Kim. Um Delise works on with like Darlene and Ami and then also um Rick that writes grants as well and Special Ed. Yeah, yeah, so there's a lot of us. It's.
And I think the other piece, when we hear about the word competitive. Often it's not an all or nothing. So it's they take the pie and they say, okay, we had twenty-five people apply for it. We're going to divide it twenty-five ways. Or we we went through the grants and twenty of the twenty-five qualify, we're going to do that. Or they give you. Because a lot of them have a budget in it. So if the pots a million dollars and you're asking for. Four hundred thousand, you might not get it, but you're. But you might get part of it. And so.
I also see where they have grants and like sometimes the. Requirements are like so much that then you'll see, oh, they extended the grant window because nobody applied for it because it's not worth the work. For fifteen thousand dollars, I don't have the time to do all these reports and all this data collection like it's not worth it. So you just have to really look at what. What are you getting for what they're going to give you? Because sometimes it just doesn't have a benefit.
Because I think, you know, you mentioned something, Kim, about the ADA ramp and funding a grant. I know. Just in my brief history of utilizing a grant writer, I know the city uses one on a contractual basis.
Um.
But I, you know, if we look outside of like this type of stuff. You know, when we start looking.
That's when you would consider. Yeah.
Um you know, the HVACs, you know, quarter million dollars. If there's a grant out there that we're not seeing or we don't aren't aware of, then maybe.
Those are the kind of ones where maybe if if it if it's.
So I would almost call it more like a grant hunter.
Yeah.
Than a grant writer. Because it it's kind of like a scholarship in a weird way. If you don't know where to go look for a scholarship to go to college. It's not that they're not out there, but if you don't click on the right search engine to go look for the right one. So I'm almost, you know, you're right. I think grant hunter almost than writer.
Well, I think.
There's some scripts you can actually purchase, um like Northwest Philanthropy that are.
There's there's you, there's services where you and then it shows you. So like when we were working, trying to figure out playground, like you you just, I mean, you're talking. Pages upon pages trying to find the right.
And that's what I'm saying. I know like, you know, you guys are focused on this and and trying to get certain grants that kind of match, but if. If if there is a an avenue that we could utilize that may. Pay for some of the the things that we need as a district. You don't, I don't know. I was just throwing it out there.
Do you know, I mean, I'm I'm like really open to any ideas if we even know how to ask. But I mean, I don't even truly, I mean, I know a few places, but I don't even really know how to begin that discussion. Oh, what does that say?
So much echoing.
Can you hear me now?
Can you turn your either computer on mute? Or something?
Try again, Delise.
What about now?
No.
You must have your phone and your computer on or two speakers on on your.
We had this trouble yesterday in a team's meeting. It was all it did was echo. I don't know.
Okay, try it. We'll li- we'll listen through it. Go ahead, Delise.
Um there's there's a company in sunny side called RBI.
But we certainly could subscribe to like a.
A listserv of some kind.
Yeah.
Well, I I know the city of Prosser uses a grant writer on.
The hospital does, PETA does.
Maybe it's worth. How does this work and?
Yeah.
I can speak to how it works a little bit. And so the city shares that with PETA and a few other organizations. So it's a shared cost for the grant writer's salary. So it might be, you know, looking into if it we they want to further divide the cost, you know, what. How much would the school district have to pay, you know, proportionate to that salary to get in on the grant writer? And I don't know if they also do um searches as well. But it's definitely, you know, it's definitely sh- shared between a few other um public entities. So it's it's a possibility. It's a good idea.
Love at least to be able to um have a conversation with someone about what does that mean and what. You know, what is the cost? And so if you say we're going to share, what is the portion that's the share and?
How does it work? And those grant people are the ones that know the grants and when they're coming and what they are.
Well, there may be some that we don't know about.
Yeah, oh, they're definitely.
Yeah, I'm sure there are. Well, like even what's going on with Boys and Girls Club.
Yep, they're working on and Boys and Girls Club are always kind of working on. Little grants here and they're like, oh, maybe if we can get a hundred thousand here and twenty thousand there like. They but they have a person that full-time works on that.
Yes.
Be interesting to get.
Look at our options, see what's out there.
That's worth pursuing or not.
And I think Eric had something just to tack on about migrants there to share.
Yeah, so I just wanted uh earlier, it was asked what it. As far as formulas and calculations and monies, so I wanted to share my screen. And uh. Can you allow me?
Do that, Eric, a share.
Oh, so Delise said, yes, you want to three sunny side inherited use R B I.
R G I, yeah, Gear Up. This it's the same group that Gear Up uses. Yeah, Morales. And they to write, they do the writing.
So uh here is, actually, this came from O S P I when I had a conversation.
Blow it up.
Yep.
Yeah, zip it like a increase is it's really hard to see.
Can you see that a little bit better?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so there are several factors that come into play when it comes to funding. And this is the funding formula that came to me from last year. There's not. Too much change for this year, but in regards to migrant dollars, you get so many points per factor. So. The COE or Certificate of Eligibility is one point have are are they priority for service, which means are there multiple factors? That are inhibiting them from. Pers- you know, uh inhibiting them from actually access to the core instruction. So all that comes through the interview that Selena conducts with the families when they first come to our school district. Then we also get another point if we have a multitude of students who have multiple mitigating factors to their success. And then there's also other funds available that are here and I'll share this with you. I'll I'll email it to everybody so you can have a copy of it and and take a look at it. But then there's also things that uh increase or decrease depending on what's available um to our district already. And at the very end, there's also a portionment for health services that come. So what does this really look like? Uh it looks like this. Here's a. Can you see this very well? It's a, this is a. Us.
Nothing changed, Derek.
Nothing changed?
We're just looking at the bottom of that original page.
Okay, let me stop this one. And I'll reshare this one. So this is uh the actual portionment for our migrant funding and how it came. You can see on the top. Uh it has nine 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 is the code. That's the state total. And then we are zero three one one six in the system, in our grant system in the state. And it says Prosser and kind of breaks everything down. It explains the regular dollars, the average amount, the priority for service number, priority dollars, so on and so forth, subtotals. But the factors, uh if you look at other funds factors. That is where I'm really paying attention to and seeing what that does to our budgets. Last year, there was a. A miscommunication that we were losing a significant amount of money in the migrant budget and weren't. It it was. Marked as carryover from a previous previous year's grant, so that money still continues to carry over. It is dwindling though. I do want to kind of make you aware of that, but. This is why we are really working hard on our efforts to ensure that we're making sure we're qualifying all families so we can. Provide the services needed um to our community. And so I again, I will send this to everyone. So you guys can have a copy of it and take a look at it. I would like to also kind of point your um. Attention to these bottom columns here. Uh they show you title three, title one A, lap, T B I P. All of those things as well at the very bottom and kind of you've already seen them in the presentation. And kind of, you've already seen them in the presentation, but here they are within the spreadsheet. And this came directly from O S P I's state budget allocation worksheet. So the numbers in here are from the state, so I just wanted to make sure.
That one you need to, they, it's so, it's really, you'd have to email that one. It's really hard to see. Maybe if you could email both of those to the board, that'd be great.
Yep, I will be sure to do that, but I do want to let you at this, at least give you some more information rather than just waiting for so long.
Thanks, Eric.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions on the grant?
Can ask me anytime, all the things you want.
That's right. All right, well, thanks for putting that together.
No problem.
Great, informational. So next up is the GISA update.
So when we met at our one on one, you just asked for an update. I did get an email from Evan at GISA. On the twelfth, January twelfth. We are, we have generated five hundred and fifty two dollars and ninety five cents. I want you to think about that. That's at five cents a swipe. That's a lot of swipes. And between November to December and we increased the swipes by one thousand and seventy seven. Somebody did some Christmas shopping probably. And the number of the, we have a hundred and fifty eight, we have a hundred and fifty eight activated cards. His statement at the end, it says, from what I can see by the numbers, Proser continues to have had one of the quickest new card launches and sustained growth for new card members. So I think that, you know, as as we kind of wrap up levy work and some other things, then we'll put another big push on that. Let people see this, obviously not the names, but we have a hundred and fifty eight people generating this amount. And there's how many people who probably already hold a GISA card and don't know that they can just go trade it in for a Proser one.
Yeah.
And, and.
Well, put it on Parents' Club.
Well, you know, it sounds kind of crazy, but I think there's something to be said for that. I don't think a lot of times people really realize there is no cost or, or. Anything to them. You just carry it. It's just a Proser card and you swipe it when you do it and we get five cents every time you use it. And so it really is a good thing for our schools. We do get a guaranteed five thousand dollars by becoming a member and so. It's, it has some little caveats in it, but it's really about student success and athletics and.
A S B.
A S B related. I think I, I should be cautious of using the word athletics, extracurricular in its nature.
I know.
New football helmets.
Yeah, yeah.
Get a couple.
I know, I, I think Rick had mentioned it and I think as this program started, there was an opportunity to put. Like a branch within the school.
Yeah, the kiosk here.
Yeah, the kiosk, but actually having.
Right down here, we're hoping to put a branch.
I guess would be kids working.
Kids work, there's a kid that's a manager. They have an employee that supervises and then kids can do banking.
Do we know how far out that? Or maybe we can find out for.
Well, it's, it is in the works still. There's just some structural pieces that we have to have the class that goes along with it. And then we have to basically approve their curriculum. And the financial literacy is probably going to be a graduation requirement when this legislative session's done. And so I don't, I think it's sooner than later. We do kind of have the area, we kind of have that as a ticket booth, but could it be dual purpose? And, right, and then what are the, are the stipulations? Does it have to be open, normal banking days and what does that do to our summer? And so we got to get some of that stuff and then we'll probably have to have a policy accordingly. So it's sooner than it is later. I do know that, but.
Assuming there are Tri-City schools that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, there's quite a few schools that have them and maybe not so with GISA, but other.
Yeah, because actually a lot of the credit unions.
Are doing that.
Are doing school, you know, school sponsored promotional things to try and. Credit unions have a, federal credit unions have a requirement for community service and get back to the community and part of their FDIC insurances, you know, there's pieces there. And Evan can tell you all about it. When he tried, gave me the sales pitch, it was a big deal. And so we need you type deal.
Great, well, thank you for that update. Any questions on that? All right. Hearing none, so the rate, well, next regular board meeting will be January twenty fourth, right here in this room at six P M. No further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.